Would like to call the meeting to order. So welcome everyone to the Thursday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three school committee meeting. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board and committee members will be remote and remote attendance shall count toward quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. This meeting is open to the public. We will take comments via the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure you include your full name and address. We will do our best to address all comments and questions. However, we will not read questions that have already been answered. And so before we move into the first item on the agenda, we would like to pose a mo- hold a moment of silence. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. We have suffered a loss to the Easton Public School family. Jill Kemp has been a paraprofessional at Blanche James Elementary School. She courageously fought breast cancer for years and succumbed unfortunately recently. Her husband Christian and her beautiful children Benjamin, Timothy and Allison were just loves of her life. And we are exceedingly grateful for her many years of service and for the impact she has had on many, many children that will last for years and years and years to come. So we feel fortunate to have had her in our family. Our thoughts are with the Kemp family. She has a great number of siblings and they're a beautiful family. I met with them today and they are obviously devastated by the loss as we are. So I would like to please have a moment of silence in honor of Jill and for the strength of her family as they deal with this terrible loss. Thank you Chair Star.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. Okay, all right. So our first item on the agenda tonight is a vote to approve the Lexia contract. Dr. Cabral?
The Lexia contract is for as used as an intervention for reading instruction. And I will ask Assistant Superintendent Chrissy Pruitt to give a brief overview and answer any questions you might have about that contract.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Lexia was a very smart company during COVID. They decided to offer their program for free for many students and many communities, schools. And we thankfully took, we definitely took advantage of that, of that opportunity. As a result, we have found the benefits of the program. And due to the end of the pandemic, they are no longer free. Many of our teachers do utilize the program with their students. The program is used for additional reading support as well as i- in the classroom and at home over the summer. There's many positive aspects to this. So this is something that we utilize A through eight, and we are looking to renew for next year. While we will be implementing the new reading program, we would like one more year with the program, with the Lexia program to see how to complement each other and if it is still of value alongside Witten Wisdom.
Okay. Do committee members have any questions or comments? Nancy?
Thank you. Chrissy, I'm looking at the handout we were given for Lexia, and there's a one-year, two-year, and three-year renewal. We're only looking for a one-year renewal at this point, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Lauren?
Hi, I have a question. If we, I mean, I understand it was free, so we never paid ever for it?
We have.
Sorry, I just lost you. Yes, we paid for it in the past. I'm so sorry. We paid. Sorry, we did pay for it, but it was, it's a renewal now. So it was free for one, for one year during the pandemic, and then we did have to pay for it.
We have had it. We have had a limited number of licenses before the pandemic. But then during the pandemic, Lexia made it free. More teachers utilized it. It had a great positive impact for student achievement, and so we're looking to extend it for the year.
I know it well. So, so now it was used in along with foundations. But now we don't think we would need to use it alongside Witten Wisdom. Is that what you're saying?
No, we are, we are looking to use it alongside Witten Wisdom. It's a supplement. So it's something that our teachers are used to. So as they transition to the Witten Wisdom program, this is something that they are, are used to utilizing with the, with the students and will be used as a supplement. And like I said, it's, it also serves as enrichment for some of our students. So that's, that's definitely a benefit to it. I know that there was a question at one of the schools because of Witten Wisdom, if we wanted to still utilize it. The principal sought feedback from the staff, and the staff found that it was very valuable and did want to continue to use.
Any other questions from committee members? So just to clarify, so given that the the materials we were given do include three options, we are voting to approve, you are proposing option three, which is the one-year renewal?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great.
I'm sorry, I'm still not clear. So next year, after our one year is up, you could come back to us and say that it was really beneficial to use alongside Witten Wisdom, and we want to do it for another two years, three years, whatever.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All righty, so I will make a motion then to vote to approve Lexia contract option three, which is a one-year renewal. Can I get a second?
Durant, second.
And roll call vote?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Thank you. And let's see, so next item on the agenda is potential discussion and action. So possible vote relating to hiring in Unit A. Dr. Cabral?
So to this point, we're getting toward the end of the hiring process. We believe the end of the hiring process means that it's typically around the time of year that other districts have the end of their hiring process. And so it is possible that people could be looking to make moves, whether they're moving with their family or they're looking for a change of position to a different type of education. And so at any time, of course, we still could have resignations or transfers. And then that would have a trickle-down effect, so to speak, and we would need to open more positions. But as of this time, we have, we believe we are aware of any moves. We have a couple of positions that are still open. And as of now, we have hired sixty-one people this hiring season. Of the six sixty-one, not all in Unit A, but of the sixty-one, I have come to you for your consideration to allow five of them to be hired above step seven on the teacher's contract scale, the Unit A scale. Per the EEA contract right now, I need to consult the school committee to have, to get permission to do that. All of those positions to date have been in specialized areas that are extremely hard to find people in those particular fields. They have included the ELL department, mental health, school adjustment counselor, health and wellness. And I am now asking for your permission for one more, for a total of six. This is another position that benefits from more than one license. This professional has many years of experience, but has more than one license in areas that we are of great need in Easton. And so I'm hoping to get this professional on board and offer them a step above step seven. Again, it will be the sixth person this year, which honestly, I thought there would be more. I think we've been quite fortunate to get really high-quality staff in an extremely competitive market and be able to hire them at a, at a cost that's reasonable to Easton, considering their great deal of experience. And as I said, multiple licenses and certifications. So I am asking for your consideration and vote for permission to add another person to the staff above step seven.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. Does anybody have any comments or questions before we move this to a vote? Seeing none, okay. All right, so can I get a motion then to approve hiring an additional Unit A staff member above step seven?
Durant, so moved.
And can I get a second?
Luca, second.
Roll call vote?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, so next up is discussion and vote to approve two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four subcommittee assignments. So we had done a partial list at the last school committee meeting, but not all members were able to be present for that discussion. So we are continuing that discussion. And we are seeking to look at the assignments that were not addressed last time and see if anybody for assignments that were discussed previously would, would like to change any of those as well. So, so I guess we can just go through the list starting at the top. Unless anybody has any questions or comments before we begin? Okay, all right. So fee, I think we determined, I know this was a question last time, whether or not it was town or school. I think we clarified, Nancy, that it's, it's school assignment?
Oh, I have an email into Lisa. Have not heard of it. Soon as I know, I'll let you know. But I believe we did discuss this at our last fee meeting, that one school committee member would be fine.
Okay, all righty.
And I'm happy to do that, yes.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody else who has an interest in representing the school committee on fee? Okay, all right. So I think we can just, thinking we'll move these all to vote after we discuss them versus going line by line? Okay. All righty, so the naming subcommittee. This is currently Michelle, Nancy, and Lauren. Any, does anybody want to come off of that? Anybody want to be added on? No? Okay. All right, negotiation subcommittee, so it's currently Jackie and myself. I am happy to stay on, but certainly open for discussion if anybody wants to come off or be added.
I still can't be on, right?
Yes. Yep.
Just thought I'd throw it out there.
Yes.
I'm happy to stay on.
Okay. All right. The policy subcommittee, this is currently Jackie and Nancy. So does anybody want to come off of this? Any strong interest in joining?
It's a wonderful committee. I'm happy to stay on.
Me as well.
Okay.
Really?
I will say that the attorney did reach out to me and say that she had a huge file and was wondering if there was movement on that. And I told her, oh, yes, there is a committee and they are meeting and working on it. So she's ready to assist at any time if necessary.
All right, so the school planning committee. This, this was a town one that was previously discussed, and I don't think we have any.
No, yeah, we, we had our last planned meeting. We have, you know, kind of update meetings here and there. But the, the full committee meeting, as of right now, we don't intend on meeting again unless something comes up that we need to. It's still there. We're not shutting it down yet until everything is completely done. But yeah, there's no need to add anybody at this time.
I think you already voted on that, so I don't think it needs to be part of tonight's list.
All righty, so next up is the STEAM committee.
So this is Pruitt. We spoke about this at the last meeting, and I had said that you had talked Loomis may be interested. I don't know if you have any further details on that or if that's still the current stage.
Yes, I know that, I know that Michelle was on the committee. So I don't know if she wants to continue or if Lauren wants to do it. But we will be reestablishing it this coming year. So that is something to, so we meet about four times a year if a four to six times a year quarterly or a little bit more, sometimes when it comes closer to around events. But we, it's within the community. We, we meet with stakeholders within the community as well as staff members that are interested in being on the committee to encourage and move STEAM programming forward within the Easton Public Schools.
If Lauren's interested in it, I mean, I'm happy to step aside and let her do it. Or anyone else?
I am happy to take it on. I don't want to steal it from you if you, you know.
It's all good.
Okay, all right. So Lauren, thank you for volunteering for that. And Michelle, thank you for your service. All right, so the superintendent's advisory committee. So this has just been on a rotating basis depending on who's available to attend meetings.
I think Lynn can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe numbers eight to fourteen you already voted on. I don't know if you want to review them, which certainly you can, but then you don't have to put them on your list and we could skip to fifteen, unless I'm wrong about that and Lynn can correct me. But I believe you voted on those at the last meeting.
I think we did, but where Lauren wasn't here.
Sure, absolutely.
I think I'd like to at least run through that list and just see if there is any interest in, in changing, so.
Issue ours, Lauren.
The always exciting audit committee? If anybody loves numbers and would love to, it's, I've done it for many years. I actually enjoy it. I'm happy to continue to do so. And I'm actually the current chair of the committee, so happy to stay on. But if somebody else feels a strong interest, please speak up. Don't want to hog that one. Okay, all right. Let's see, so human rights committee. So, you know, Michelle, you've done this for a long time and I think
I'd like to say it's sworn in already. Yes, unless somebody really wants to.
And the very exciting MBTA Community Zoning Implementation Review Team. So Nancy's
I'm glad Nancy, we co-serve on that one.
So, yeah, so we can, again, unless somebody feels strongly about that. And then municipal building committee. So this one is currently Nancy and Jackie.
Yeah, so I, you know, I have really enjoyed being on this committee. I, I love my building projects. But due to other responsibilities I have right now, I, and this, I think this committee is going to need a lot of work over the next six months because of the, of the new building project. And so I would, I just don't think I can continue on it at this time. But it's a great group of people. It's very interesting. It's a very exciting project, so I highly recommend it.
When, how often do they meet and when?
So it's usually Tuesday nights at six o'clock. Every once in a while, there'll be a different day based on availability because of the building project. Now they have to make sure the owner's project manager and the architects can meet too. So it's usually Tuesdays at six, usually once a month, sometimes more if something comes up. But it's hybrid. They meet in the Corona Room at Town Hall. So you can participate either in person or by Zoom.
And if it's anything like the school building project, it may require more participation if the project is to go forward and there were actual construction going on and so forth. But that would be several months from now. It is very interesting, though.
It's very interesting. It's a really good group of people.
Yeah.
So Nancy, can we assume you want to stay on?
Of course, yes.
Okay, okay. So Lauren and Michelle, do either of you think you have the bandwidth and interest for this? Michelle, no, Lauren, yes?
I will take it.
Okay, all right.
You like it, Lauren. You like it.
All right, that's a big one. So thank you for stepping up for that. It's great, okay.
Lauren, I'm gonna, I'll email the chair and I'll let him know that you'll be taking my spot. And you'll have to get sworn in for that as well at Town Hall.
But Lauren, I just want you to know, sometimes they start talking about things and Andy asked me a question the other night. Yeah, that sounds great. I have no idea what they're talking about.
Because most of the people on the committee are like engineers, architects, green people.
The town is very fortunate to have them.
Yeah, they're all professionals. That's why it's so interesting, because you can just sit there and learn and absorb. It's great, but you don't always understand, yes.
It's not that I don't understand. I do, but it, it's engineering and architecture, and that's not my thing. So, but it is, it's a great group of people. It don't, it really is, so welcome onboard.
All right, town budget subcommittee. Any, any changes there?
I'm happy to stay on it.
Okay, me too. And then ECAT, Nancy, this is your, your baby. Okay, all right. Frothingham is assigned to the school committee chair. And then we have the animal assisted therapy oversight committee. So there's a question as to Lauren, if you would be interested in that. I think at the time, you didn't have other kind of heavy lift assignments, so it's a new one. Wanted to see if you have any interest in it first. Give you right of first refusal. Okay.
Do we know anything about the committee? How often it will meet or?
It will mostly meet to, it, it's going to meet once a year to review how the program has been going. Right, to this point, we've only had one dog in the district. But with the with trying to be creative in how we address the social emotional needs of, of children in schools, it has gotten a resurgence in interest. And so we do currently have two more applications for people who would like to have therapy dogs in the district. So we will also meet to review those applications. Make sure nothing's missing, see if there are any questions or concerns, and then approve that for, for those people. I have one that is just being updated. And I have one in hand that we can actually meet on this summer in time for potential September start, so.
Okay.
That also will be interesting. And I certainly can mandate that the animal attend the meeting if you would like to meet them.
That would be lovely.
All right, great. So in summary, so the changes that we are voting on today would be, let's see, Lauren, Lauren onto the STEAM committee, replacing Jackie on the municipal building committee and being assigned to the animal assisted therapy oversight committee. And then everything else remains as printed. Okay, all right. So, so can I get a motion then to accept the school subcommittee assignments for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four?
Wiseman, so moved.
Second, to Luca.
And roll call vote?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yeah.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for all of this extra work that happens that the public is probably not aware of. But we do a lot more than meet if you meet every other week, so. Great, all right. So next up, public comment. I do not see any. So I think we can move on from that. So next up would be superintendent notes. Dr. Cabral?
I have a few short items. First, Mrs. Pruitt and Mrs. Starjevsky, our finance director, and I were fortunate to attend the Mass, Mass Association of School Superintendent Conference this week. Huge, huge amount of information. We're very excited to sit down, debrief about this. The focus being on diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility, and belonging for all students and all staff. We want to make sure that education is accessible to every person who seeks it. And we want to make sure that people are comfortable and in an environment where they can thrive. And so we have a very strong commitment to that this year. And it was, it included areas in finance, in resources, in special services, in, certainly in DEIA curriculum and so forth. So we're very pleased that Mass is taking on this focus. It is critical in the cultural and political climate that we have in the country and truly in the world right now, especially as we're all sort of recovering from, from COVID and other really big events in our history. And so we, we have a lot to go over and go through, but it's certainly giving us some direction for some initiatives going forward this year. Also, our director of special services, Craig Davidson, has begun. He's a great addition to the staff. He's fit right in and is just taking right off. Very experienced director and has already hit the ground running, so we welcome him. He is an Easton resident with a small child, so we're excited to welcome his daughter to the district as well. The two positions that we're working on right now that are not in Unit A, Director of DEIA and the Technology Director, we are very close to finishing those. The Director of DEIA, I will be making a recommendation or an offer, excuse me, this, this week to that person. And should they accept, I'll be able to introduce them to the school committee. Director of Technology, I am conducting finalist interviews on Monday. So I look forward to meeting those finalists. I want to thank every member of the committees that worked tirelessly, really, to everything from paper screenings to interviews to reading prompts and giving feedback to meetings, people who came to focus groups. Really is a tremendous amount of work. But as I always tell the leadership team, there really isn't anything more important that we can do for our children than hiring the right people to be with them and to serve them. So it's been a tremendous effort, mostly run by Mrs. Pruitt, who's organizing those committees. And I was very pleased in meeting the two finalists for DEIA. And I'm, I'm sure it will be the same for Technology Director. So we're moving in a great direction. We have some fabulous people joining the team. It's very, very exciting for Easton. We do have a new liaison for early college. So it was Dan Fitzgerald, Guidance Counselor at the high school. He does have small children. He's stepping down from that role. He did a great job. We want to thank him for all of his help in working with us and especially me, as I've been trying to get this going and really kind of on his heels about making sure that we got some great offerings for kids at the high school. He did a fantastic job. He is going to be succeeded by Jen Tantillo, who's an English teacher at the high school. We actually have a meeting coming up. She's excited to begin. We're excited to have her, and we have some great things in the pipeline, so. And we have some great things in the pipeline. So we're looking forward to having that meeting so we can update you on what's coming. It is really growing exponentially and I can't wait to tell you about it. I wanted to remind people that we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony and celebration on August 20th. I have sent a, an invitation, electronic invitation, invitation to all of our Easton Public School community. It is going out. We have a small but mighty committee working on getting it together, run by Jackie. It is going to be a lot of fun. We have a little ceremony, very short ceremony at 10 o'clock. And then we are going to have, starting at 11, we're going to have tours and food trucks and entertainment. And kids can play on the beautiful playgrounds and people can come through the school. You do not have to have children to come. We welcome everyone. The whole, the whole focus on this project has been a community space for every member of the community. It is 100% accessible to all people of all ages, of all abilities. We can't wait to show that off. If you're curious about the school and how it might be used outside of school hours, it's a perfect time to come. And we're going to be taking people around in small groups. We'll answer any questions you have. You can see the facilities and let your imaginations run wild on how you can make use of this great facility that the residents have so generously supported. We also have the daycare beginning for staff of Easton Public Schools and Easton Town employees. That is going to start this fall. We have already hammered out the details with the YMCA. We've signed the contract, had the building inspector come, gotten the insurance. We are all teed up and ready to go. And it's been, I have to say, it's been a draw. Some of the people that we have been interviewing have actually reached out about it in particular and have expressed a lot of interest. And so we picked up a few more kids, too, of brand-new employees. So it's a great perk for staff. It's great for our, all of our Eames students because they're in the childcare program. They're going to be able to work with real children. And so it's, it's just a win-win-win all around. We get to work in another facet with our phenomenal partners at the YMCA. And it's just, it's cost neutral to us. It's like a perfect opportunity. And we're super happy that that is actually getting, getting off the ground. People may not realize that it has been many years in the making and we're finally there, so we're, we're glad about that. And then I just want to update people about the many things that are going on in the district. We have, the OA Courts have been completely demolished. They're being worked on. We have the Richardson Olmstead parking lot. DPW is doing that project and also helping us with the courts. So the parking lot is, is offline. If you have been in the Arrow parking lot, you know that it was a hot mess and it was getting to the point of not really being very safe, so that's going to be completely done. The back of Richardson Olmstead, on the Olmstead side, has been torn up. That part of the playground, what we're calling the North Playground, is currently under construction. We're expecting that to be done hopefully around October, maybe the beginning of November. The South Playground, we're still tweaking some final details. That should go out to bid shortly. And we'll see who's going to be working on that, how much that project's going to be. We also have the fields and playground at Blanch Eames are done. It has been such a joy seeing so many families, again, multi-generational families. It's fully accessible. I've seen people in wheelchairs and adults with canes bringing younger children. Please, please come and use the Blanch Eames playgrounds. They're open for business. They are hugely educational, very interactive and interesting. And we want people to make as much use out of them as possible. However, the fields, though they look beautiful, robust, and ready to go, they really are not. And so those are not open. And we're truly begging the community. I know it's hard to resist. It truly is hard to resist. But the, the design architects tell us that that needs two growing seasons or else we won't have fields. It'll be a big mud pit within a one year. And so we really need to let those roots take hold. And then we'll have some great fields that we can make use of. In the meantime, the OA Fields, we've got plenty of space over there. We welcome people over there. But please try to hold off on the fields here. They're green and gorgeous and lush, but they're still very young. And if anybody's done this kind of work in their yards, you know, you really have to baby, baby it at first. And so those will not be available. We aren't sure if they're going to be available in the fall. We have to track their growth and see if they're able to get two full seasons. If we have a really tough summer and a drought, it could affect that, but we will certainly keep people posted. And, and we will let everybody know as soon as they're ready to be used. With the playgrounds, they're all wide open, so come on over and use them. And just again, we hope we see everybody on August 20th. I do want to finally note that Mrs. Pruitt starts her doctoral program at BC next week. And so she will be there all week long. We're very excited for her. We were able to talk to some colleagues at Mass who have been through the program. She's very excited about it. I'll let her talk about it more if she'd like to, but just want to congratulate her once again. We're here to support her and all of her efforts and wish her the very best with that program. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So next up is Assistant Superintendent Notes. So Mrs. Pruitt.
Thank you so much. Yes, I, I will be beginning my program next Monday. It does go for every summer for the next, well, two summers. The program is three years, but it involves two summers. I will be gone for two weeks for the program. I'm very excited. I was able to go to a session at MESS with one of the professors that will be teaching the course. And just the depth of knowledge and the amount of, the amount that I'm going to learn and be able to bring back to the district is just phenomenal. And I'm really, really excited about, about what the work will bring. And being able to have a place for me to learn and ask questions and be able to bring that back to the district will be extremely important. So I thank you all so much for your support as I venture on this journey. But I do know that this will be a huge benefit to the district. So again, I really thank you for, for that. And thank you for, to Dr. Cabral for really encouraging me to take this next step and pushing me professionally and personally in my journey towards, in my career. So thank you so much. So I just wanted to let you know that at this office is really working on closing up the end of the school year, which as far as curriculum goes, and ensuring that everything is in place for next year. So as far as subscriptions and as you see all the contracts that you've been approving, we also do a lot of the onboarding with teachers to ensure that they have the, the, all the, the online access that they need, so forth and so on. We order all the materials. The materials come in. We double check with the principals to make sure if there's any missing materials, let's get them in now so that our teachers are all prepared and ready to go. So that's been a, you know, that's been a huge undertaking. And we are, I, I have to give a shout out to my executive administrative assistant, Julie Shine, who is so phenomenal at, at really leading a lot of that work and ensuring that our, our teachers are all set with, with the, the online access that they need. So thank you to Julie. And ensuring that all of the, the purchase orders go through so that we have access to that. So the, the summer school programs are up and running. The C Program, which is the Summer Enrichment Academy, we have over 300 students that we are servicing this summer. So I really want to give credit to our coordinators, Megan St. Martin and Rita Pastore at the K through five level, Amy Nian and Abby Boyd at the six through eight level, and Ryan Ring and Stephanie San Pietro at the nine through 12 level. It's a huge undertaking and they have just taken it and ran. You know, they are, they are doing such a wonderful job. On the ESY side for special education, we have Sherri Spleen and Mark Lenahan that are overseeing, that are coordinating that, those programs. I just want to highlight, especially to the School Committee, if you're getting complaints, transportation is always a struggle in the summer. Just when we get things under control, the program ends. And I think it's because we go from a large amount of buses that cover the entire town throughout the year to four buses and even smaller number of vans, you know, from what they're used to. So, and the vans are running constantly for the various times of the programs. So we have had some delays. We get substitute bus drivers that don't know the route and don't know the town. So we really thank everybody for their understanding. And, but we're very happy that we are able to provide transportation because that does take a huge lift off of family shoulders. So, so I just wanted to highlight that and let you know about that. And then as we should have said, on top of all the curriculum work that we've been doing, we have really been undertaking the hiring of three major positions because we found, we were able to complete Craig's position, you know, the Director of Special Services. So that has been a big undertaking, but I've been so proud to work with the committees and the hard and dedicated work that they've been doing to ensure that we get the right people for Easton. And that the people also feel like they're the right fit, that, that we're the right fit for them. Because it has to be, you know, equally advantageous. So I also just want to say that many families at the high school level have gotten notification that the Athletic Director has also started, Meredith McDonald, AKA Mary. She is so excited and just full of energy, ready to start. And she's very accessible, so if anybody needs to contact her, feel free to reach out. She is ready to respond. And, and like I said, extremely enthusiastic, which we're really excited for. And that's all I have for you.
Great, all right. Thank you, Mrs. Pruitt.
Okay, hello. Thank you for those updates. I was wondering about A.D. because seems we found out on Facebook and not from you guys. So, but I, we looked her up and she looks great, so I'm very excited for Ms. Mary to be with us. I had another question about, remember, we hired a scheduling company and I don't remember the name of the company off the top of my head. And I believe they were supposed to have things in place for this fall, 2023. Is that correct? Or am I off a year?
Oh, do you mean the audit?
Something we paid money for.
Yes, yes. We had a comprehensive audit. Actually, we had three of them.
You had a bunch of audits.
We had three and one done by Desi. So we were, we had one of our special education programs, our actual programs that we have been putting in place over the last few years. We had one of grade six through 12 scheduling. And we had one for special education utilization of resources and scheduling from pre-K to 12. We, that schedules, so especially at the high school, students pick their schedules typically at the beginning of April. So those have already been done for, for next year. Everything we're doing now, we, we did have initial meetings with the company to go over findings. And so it's going to be from now until next April, really trying to figure out if we are going to make changes, what are they? How are we going to do that? What makes sense? Some things may have financial implications, excuse me, some things may have contractual implications. So anytime we make a schedule change, it's a rather big deal. And so it's going to be a whole year of planning for that.
Yeah, I, I knew that it took a while and they just came on board. Like, I think it started in 2022. So I knew that there was, do you have results from any of the sped stuff yet?
We have, yes, we have a report. We, I definitely, I'm sorry.
Did we pass?
Oh, it does, it's not a pass. We actually don't get a grade. They make suggestions. And, and they're not, they're not, we're not bound by them by any means. They just make suggestions and we either can take them or not take them. Or, I mean, they could say, you know, you can save a lot of money if you have no sports. And we're like, no. They didn't say that. I'm just, oh gosh, I probably just started a terrible rumor. Making something up that is not the case. But my point is, sometimes they tell you something and you're like, well, yeah, obviously we can save money doing something like that, but we have no intention of doing anything like that. They did bring some things to our attention that we were already aware of, things that maybe we weren't so aware of. We did have them also do an audit in terms of achievement for different subgroups. That's just very validating most of the time and really helps us to communicate it well to other stakeholders in the district. So, so we can put all those together and share them with you. We haven't really gone over them with the staff yet. We have just gone over it with the leadership team so that we could really just look at it for any errors or things that they might have gotten wrong that we need them to correct in a final draft. So do we even get a final, do we get a final draft yet with all corrections?
Yes, we, we have. And, and just to also keep in mind that we just, we, we just got all this information, right? It was a year-long study. They spoke with many, many stakeholders. Now, with all of this information, as well as the state's information, because we went through the tier-focused monitoring, as well as, you know, the other information we had where we had an auditor for our programs. Now with, with the new Director of Special Services on board, our Director of DEIA, we have our Director of Informational Technology, all the principals, and our strategic plan is coming to an end this year. So after this year, we'll be creating, or during this, this coming year, we'll be creating a new strategic plan. So this is the year that it's all going to come together. I also want to note that Kelly Kavanaugh, the high school, has a scheduling Subcommittee. So they're using this year to plan for any changes in the schedule moving forward. So they're, they're taking all the information from the high school and they're utilizing that for this Subcommittee for, that's going to occur this year. A lot of information, which is fantastic that we have this information. Exactly. And data drives the work. Data drives the work. We have it. We've got a lot of it.
My next question is about buses. So we, we renewed the contract. Now that land changes is in place and we're not, you know, half year here, half year there. Is there, will there be an ease on the buses? So, for example, will the buses be able to get kids to the school without having to double around? Because that's what happened the end, you know, the second half of this year.
Definitely, yes. The, the, what we did in, in order to not disrupt as many children as possible, we kept all bus stops the same from January to June. Obviously now, we can, or and we are, creating the bus stops as if we're doing it fresh from the beginning of the year. And so we can mix all that up. What we are going to spend the next year looking at is whether we're going to be able to reduce our number of tiers for busing. The reason that is important is because that is what would ultimately allow us to change start times. And we're very, we've been very aware of the research. I'm channeling Caroline here, but we agree and have read the same research that the littles should be starting earlier and the older kids should be starting even a tad later than they do now. We have not been able to do that because we have three tiers. We have 17 buses that we use three times a day. If we go to tier, if we go to two tiers, we need more buses. Can't do that with the 17. That's costly. And that's going to, that's going to cost a lot more money. And right now, Lucini doesn't even have those buses. We did work into our contract that was just passed that if we choose to have a conversation about altering the tiers, that they will work with us on doing that. However, the concern with that, and so we won't know until we have our new bus stops this year and then go through several months of it. What the concern is, is that now that students are coming, elementary students are coming all the way from Southeaston and different parts of Easton instead of going to their community school, how long are they going to be on the buses of the new bus stops? We have to obviously keep that in mind, especially for the younger kids. Excuse me. So we're going to spend this year monitoring ridership. We're going to spend the year monitoring the, the length of the time that children are on buses and how much it would cost if we were going to go to two tiers. All of that is going to be a big study this year. And so again, even if we All of that is gonna be a big study this year, um and so again, even if we were to determine it was something we could do, those are the kinds of things that really involve involve a lot of advanced notice, and so the school committee is the one that sets start and end times for school. And you would need to do that, I would suggest no later than March of any year to let people know for the following school year. Will we be, will we have the data we need to make that kind of determination this year? Well, it's not just data, it's also the budget, right, for next year, what's it gonna cost and are we gonna be able to afford it, you know how mercurial things are in March. Um so we may not have an answer to that, so it could be another year or two before we're able to realize something like that, but it is something that we're working on and collecting data on right now, and I I'm not sure if that's exactly what you are asking, but it's definitely something that we're focusing on.
Yeah, it is, and especially, you know, the the especially the little ones, but even the the middle school, high school. You know, being at a, on a bus so long or being at a bus stop, whatever, that definitely, I agree. I guess my other question was though, uh will there be less kids riding buses because more kids can walk now? Uh you you were transporting kids to Moreau Hall that maybe now can walk or Center School that maybe now can, I don't know.
Well, I don't think that's gonna change because students that were in Moreau Hall live close to Moreau Hall and students that were in Center live close to Center, and so that that's quite a, not only is it quite a distance for them to walk, but there are a couple of really busy roads in between have to cross, so we don't really anticipate, we didn't see much of a change in that and at the end of the year, and we don't anticipate much of a change of that going forward.
Alright, thank you, um, okay, I'll I'll let it be at that.
Okay, uh Michelle, any notes this week?
I actually do have music stuff, believe it or not, alright, um so about a month from today, usually mid-August for two weeks, the um Oliver Ames Marching Band gets underway for their two-week uh marching camp, where they learn um they're there all day, five days, and they learn their routines, their steps, their music, the entire production from soup to nuts, so it's really quite a thing to see come together in just two weeks. Um and then that's what they compete with, that show. And also, they've announced the return of Tiger Rama, which is extremely exciting. Last year, if you recall, they brought back um hosting a marching band competition at our school in Target, uh it's called Tiger Rama, and this year we're doing it again and it will be October twenty-first. So save the date, I'm sure you've seen it on Facebook. It'll be a lot of fun, so yeah, music's uh gearing up for busy season, that's all I have.
Great, Jackie, any notes this week?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Lauren, any notes this week? No, okay, um, let's see.
Can I add something as a school committee note, um because uh she is the school committee secretary as well, it is Ms. Lynn's birthday tomorrow, so just wanted, everybody know that.
Happy birthday, happy birthday.
Um, okay, great, I don't, if I have any notes, I am going to the MASC Summer Institute, um I had hoped to make tomorrow's session, which unfortunately I can't due to a conflict, but I am going Sunday morning, I'm sorry, Saturday morning. You're going as well, okay, are you gonna be able to make most both sessions? Friday and Saturday?
The thing I was gonna ask you, tomorrow looks to be like an hour.
Yeah, it's kinda short, but I would, if you can go and you can grab that, I I really wanted to 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 attend the MIAA hot button thing, so if you can make it to that and get materials, um I'd appreciate that and it'd be nice to share out with the rest of the committee, any materials we bring back.
Yeah.
Um and then so Saturday will be um uh a couple of sessions on role of the chair, public comment update, um legislative update and school district equity audits, so I will see you Saturday morning, Michelle, then. In carpool if you want. So, looking forward to that.
Appreciate your engagement with MASC. Um it says a lot about the committee, people of Easton should should know how invested you are and how engaged you are in serving their children, you're not just filling a seat for all the glory and glamour of it. Uh you you really are putting in quite a lot of work and it shows, and we're exceedingly grateful for that.
Thank you, thank you, and likewise, we're very, so thrilled anytime you go to the MASSS um conferences and and the joint ones as well, which um I know, I I know, I think Lynn has sent out a couple of notifications about November. Um I will go, it kills me, it's a super tough time of year to be uh taking some time off, but it it does seem like uh well worth uh the time, so any other members, if you're interested, please check your email and respond to Lynn. Okay, alright, so next step then, uh I'd like to make a motion to go into, enter into executive session to return to open session uh pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A subsection twenty-one A seven to comply with the open meeting law to review minutes of prior executive session from May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three and pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A subsection twenty-one three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for SPEA, the Southeastern Public Employees Association, secretary, secretarial clerical custodian in food service units. And in my opinion, having this discussion in public would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Can I get a second?
Wiseman second.
And roll call vote?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Lumen, yes.
Great, alright, see you in a minute.
Great.